Good evening and welcome to the Township of Woolwich Committee of the Whole. On December 5, 2023, we welcome everyone here today and all those watching on YouTube. I will now do a roll call of council. I, Councilor Burgess, am present and chairing this meeting. Mayor Shantz?
Present.
Council Bryant?
Present.
Council Kado?
Present.
Council Grant?
Present.
And Council Schon?
Present.
Alright, we now need a motion to reconvene in open session. Have a mover, Council Bryant, ten second by Mayor Shantz. All those in favor? That's carried. Alright, moving on to land acknowledgement. I want to acknowledge the land on which we live has been here from time immemorial. And that indigenous people have lived here from time immemorial. I thank the Adawandaron, the Anishinaabe, and the Haudenosaunee people. Who have lived here and cared for this land and who will continue to share and steward this land with us. May we together learn to care for each other, our flora and fauna, and the land that sustains us. Do any council members have any declarations of community area interest tonight? Alright, see none. We have no items to come forward from closed sessions. We have no public meetings, so we'll get right into our presentations. So this evening, we have a presentation by Dana Costello of the Downtown Almyra Business Improvement Area, who is presenting an update on their community improvement plan. Please go ahead.
Good morning or good evening, everybody. It's been a long day. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Dana Costello. I am a volunteer on the BIA in Almyra. I'm a property owner in downtown Almyra. On the screen here, you can see our motivated BIA board. We have a mix of local business owners as well as property owners. Let me try and... Excuse me for a second. I want to... Get rid of this on the screen. Thank you. So this group meets once a month and what we do is we manage an annual tax levy that's collected from the local downtown businesses of $65,000 a year. We also manage and carry out a lot of special projects with the goal of beautifying our downtown. What I'm going to show you now is a few slides that just highlight some of the projects that we're really proud of that we've completed in the last couple of years. We're really proud of our banner program. We're proud of the website we created that also includes a directory of all downtown business. We're proud of sidewalk art that's throughout the downtown. A large mural on the side of Sip and Bite that adds so much color to our downtown. Nine eight-foot-by-eight-foot murals that were all pieces of art from local artists. These artists were paid and we get so much positive comments on these pieces. We did the bench rehabilitation project in coordination with EDSS. You can see the before picture there. We've also installed snowflake stroll in downtown to add some brightness in our dark winter months. We continue to open up the Mill Street seating area. This was done on a whim during COVID. We don't know what the future of this area holds, but we are proud of the work we've done and how we've improved it year over year. We're also proud of our Moonlight Madness event, which was a success this past Friday evening. Thank you to all that attended and participated. We're proud of our flowering greenery contract with Florist Terra. They did an amazing job this for their spring and summer plant in downtown Almyra. And new to that contract is the winter plant, which is out there now downtown, adding some greenery in the winter months. So now I want to pivot and talk to you about why I'm actually here. It's to give you an update on the Downtown Almyra CIP, the Community Improvement Plan. This all started in 2018 at a BIA budget meeting. And we talked about the $65,000 that we manage. And as a group, we talked about really wanting to take a portion of that budget and give it back to the businesses so that they can use it to improve our downtown. Things were looking kind of shabby. So we thought, you know, let's take some of this tax levy money and give it back to them. And yeah, we thought, yeah, let's make it an incentive for them to spend their own private money. And it's going to improve our downtown and have that ripple effect. And in just improve our community in so many ways, whether that be through more jobs downtown, that community feel, attracting more tourism, then collecting more local tax money. And we found out that we couldn't do that without a community improvement plan. So instead, we budgeted $30,000 and we created the Downtown Almyra Community Improvement Plan. So what is a community improvement plan? It's a tool to help revitalize target areas within a community by designating a particular area and providing incentive programs so that people spend private money in order to improve a particular area. These plans are typically initiated and managed by governing bodies like municipalities and townships. And they're often led by a role such as an economic development officer. So I'm going to show you hopefully a short video on what Halton Hills Community Improvement Plan promotional video to the community is.
7-Eleven, we're open 24 days a week, seven days a week, so that you have a one-stop place to shop. Treats, essentials.
I'm getting feedback. I'm wondering how to get around that. I muted.
In-store or delivered to your door 24/7. That's 7-Eleven. The improvement plan.
Testing. There we go. What's in our CIP, the one that Almyra created? There's eight financial incentive programs listed on the screen there. Two are active this year in green, one being the facade improvement grant. This is our favorite grant and we've opened it every year. It's the most flexible grant and really just encourages property owners and business owners to improve their facades. And then we've also opened the accessibility grant. And this encourages people to put in accessibility buttons on their entrances and things like that. Also in this package is six leadership programs that defines potential leadership roles to help support the program and run the program. And as well as a 136-page streetscape guideline document, which kind of sets the parameters of what the streetscape could look like. It includes things like bike racks or just general acceptable colors so that when people apply for these grants, that the committee that's judging who gets the funds has a good idea of what's acceptable. So just looking at a sample grant, the purpose of the accessibility grant is to remove barriers and increase accessibility. The plan says that 50% of eligible costs up to a maximum of $2,500 would be given to the person doing the project. And this could include ramps, elevators, automatic door openers, washroom grab bars, etc. And now I want to hear from a local business owner that is applying for this accessibility grant this year. So what is her application going to look like? She got an estimated cost of the project of $6,313. If she was approved for the maximum amount through the grant program, she would receive $2,500. And her private investment would be around $3,800. So the reason why I'm here today is because the BIA, our focus is so much on those special projects that I highlighted at the beginning of my presentation. We are a group of volunteers that do this in our spare time, in our evenings. And we're finding that there's so much more potential for this plan. And it's just not being utilized in the way that it should be. We believe that the township and its staff has the talent, the resources, and the time to really push this plan as far as it can go. And we're just, and really manage those day-to-day kind of tasks around it. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Does council have any questions for Dana? Admiral Kado?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to the presenter. Thanks for your presentation, first of all. There's certainly a lot from Almyra's BIA to be proud of. And you did a really good job of highlighting those, including the CIP. The question that I have for you, CIP has only been around since about 2019, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, the first year was 2020 that we launched it.
Do you have any data around the uptake of this?
I do, and I have a slide to show that. In 2020, we designated $15,000 for the grants, the streams that we opened, and almost $15,000 was distributed that year. In 2021, we had $20,000 set aside, but we had... I don't know if we didn't have any applications or we just didn't give out any money that year. I think it was probably a trickle effect from COVID. In 2022, about $17,000 and we distributed around 7,500. And in 2023, we've designated $20,000 and we're currently accepting and reviewing applications. Here is some examples of some people that did receive money. So Browns. Kitchen cuttings. And the quality discounts property owner for some new windows on the second level.
If I can just follow up with the question, thanks for that data. That's really helpful in understanding the uptake. Do you see any gaps or barriers to more of the businesses taking advantage of some of this? I mean, I see that the lines aren't necessarily equivalent there. What do you think are some of the barriers to having more uptake in this program?
I think one of the main barriers is communicating that this program is available to property owners and the business. Like I said, we're volunteers, so we're limited on our time and what we, the time and energy we can put into it. I also think there's a lot of questions that the applicants have. So having a resource that they could go to, a dedicated resource that they could go to to ask questions, submit the documents that we want, and then we could, they could go back and say, we actually need this. And you know, just that communication and back and forth, there's just a lot of gaps there.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Council Schon.
Thanks for better understanding of what's happening downtown. I know I appreciate kind of the nice things that make the downtown look nice now with the signs and the benches. Great work. I am kind of wondering about the... I guess this program in terms of paying for facades and just, which it says, there's not the uptake and basically we're taxing people or collecting a fee in order for them to apply to spend the money themselves. Would the business owners be better off supporting the, I guess, the more community-type projects?
Like the capital projects?
Capital projects and not the doors and facades. And not just take that money, all the budget, and leave it in the hands of the business owners. Would that be more efficient and get the job done? Are you worried that people won't invest in their businesses or buildings?
I don't think it's that the business owners and property owners will not invest. I think they're just not inclined or motivated to invest in the ways that the BIA would want them to. So those kind of beautifying factors, right? So even if you look at that, you know, the the building, the quality discounts building photo there, those windows, like they were damaged, the paint was chipped, and that property owner thought, well, this is kind of an incentive for me. I'm going to be able to save some money. Plus, it's going to look really good on the exterior. And then all those things kind of contribute to the public having a more positive feel of the downtown, really buying into that, you know, this is the heart of the town. Now, I will say, when we, when I say that there was $20,000 budgeted, it didn't, doesn't necessarily mean that that was all funded by the BIA tax levy dollars. So 10,000 of it could have been from the BIA tax levy dollars for that year. And then maybe 5,000 could have been carried over from the previous year that wasn't used. And even sometimes, like this year in 2023, the township funded the accessibility grant in the amount of $4,000. So we don't have to fund it entirely. We could even apply for other grants from third parties to help with this program. That's also part of managing it.
Council Kado?
Yeah, more of a comment, I guess, a question. This was really unique in coming to Woolwich and seeing a BIA crafting a CIP. Are you aware of any other townships that have a BIA craft the CIP and administer it?
No, in fact, the consulting agency that we use, Stemsky Kelly and Associates, they said that they had never seen a BIA fund this or create a plan like this. And that's fine. Normally, it's done by a township. We wanted so bad to give this money back to these businesses and encourage them that we took $30,000 of our budget that year and paid for it ourselves. We really wanted to see this move forward. We have the ability to take this tax levy money and invest in things like greenery and artwork and benches and, you know, all these little things that we can do. But when you stand downtown, you look at our buildings and you look at the businesses, there's some of, like, when you look at it as a whole, it can kind of have a shabby feel. Like, I don't want to insult our town because I love it. I live downtown. But we want to encourage these building owners and businesses to invest in their own buildings and invest some private dollars in it as well, right? This is just a portion of whatever that project is. For looking at a facade improvement grant, it can be up to $5,000. But if they're going to replace their siding, that could cost them upwards of 30,000. So it's just a small incentive that would really bring some cohesiveness to downtown.
Council Grant?
Thank you. Through you to the delegate. I'm just wondering, you highlighted the two kind of main areas that you're focused on so far. But I noticed that you had retrofit there as well. Could you speak upon the grant that would maybe help business owners retrofit their buildings for greener energy?
Thank you for the question. Since we have not opened that stream, I'm not familiar with the specifics of it. Having said that, in your pre-meeting packet, the CIP is attached and the full program for that stream is outlined.
And then just to follow up, when you're asking for the township's help in this, what is it you're envisioning exactly? Is it they would help put these grants out, get the word out? I'm just not sure exactly what it is that we would, what would the ideal partnership be?
So, yeah, we're ultimately looking to hand over the management to the township staff of the program. Not to say that we wouldn't contribute, you know? We'd love to be part of the conversation about what streams are opening in any given year. We'd also like to contribute to, continue to contribute to fund this program. It's more about marketing the program, accepting the applications, forming the subcommittee that decides who gets the funding, communicating back what funding has been approved, writing of the checks, sending the checks out, helping the applicants with any of their questions, collecting all the requirements as far as, you know, estimates for the project, more of the administrative tasks, the day-to-day administrative tasks.
Council Kado?
Thank you through you to the presentation presenter, sorry. If we are to assume something like the CIP, it's very Almyra-centric. Could we replicate this for other communities across Woolwich?
So this specific CIP focuses on Almyra. So even focus groups were done with the community to talk about what the community members want to see. What themes do they want to see? It really is centered around Almyra. And every CIP needs a community improvement area, a SIPA. And that kind of shows what area we're focusing on and why we're focusing on it. And those are the people that can apply. If you wanted to take this plan and expand it out into other downtowns or other areas in Almyra, you could do that. It would require going back to Stemsky Kelly Associates or another consultant to make an update to this plan. But it wouldn't be like you would need to invest, you wouldn't have to start over. You would have a really good base here. We'd probably just need to update some of the verbiage.
Any other questions from council? Alright, see none? Thank you for taking the time to present to council and for all the work you do. Oh, go ahead, Mayor Shantz. Sure.
Yeah, just probably to Derek, do we have the resources to take on a project like managing the CIP?
Thank you, through you, Chair, to council. That's a good question. I believe, you know, part of my presentation is going to be regarding an additional staff member or funds towards a, an additional staff. And then at that point, I believe that it would be feasible to take on something like that.
Alright, thanks again for coming and for all the work you do in the BIA. Alright, now moving on to delegations. We have several delegations this evening. Before we get started with that, I would like to remind everyone of the guidelines for participating tonight. On this section of the agenda, delegations will have seven minutes unless council or the clerk has set a different amount of time. After you speak, please wait for questions from council. Once there are no further questions, you may return to your seat. You can leave anytime if you wish, or you are more than welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. First up, we're talking about the proposed legislation to reverse previous decisions on municipal official plans. And for that, we have Mayor Shantz. You've provided a letter of response. Would you like to speak on that?
Sure, thank you. Two weeks ago, we, we talked about this staff proposal for how we could go forward with a, with a letter to the Minister of Municipal Pairs and Housing on what we saw as, as the area designated for growth. So you've, you've got my letter in the package that I think summarized what staff said and what I think I, what I think I heard. What I tried to do was kind of take, take the best of both worlds. And the important piece in my recommendation to the minister is that the township would continue to have through our own official plan process control over staging of the growth. So I think that's a key piece that, that gives us control. So it's not a widespread sprawl, as some people have called it. So I guess, are there questions for me or?
Go ahead, Council Bryant.
Thank you. Through you to the mayor. I have a constituent raised an issue regarding your, I guess, impartiality in this due to your husband being in the development industry. And I just wanted to put that out there for your comment.
Yeah, thank you. Brian was never in the development industry. The work that he did and he doesn't own the business anymore. He still does some work, but primarily it is for individual site-specific work and would help clients work through the planning process and, and those pieces. So he, he never did... So he, uh, he never did, uh, subdivisions or, or any kind of development like that.
Counselor Kado.
This is more a question for staff and I probably should have brought it up a couple of weeks ago, but if we were to go with a phased approach. You know, are we going to risk winding up at the OLT, uh, with a bunch of applications from individuals who may not wish to wait? Uh, for the stage to open up?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counsel Kado. Um, we have been at the LOT, uh, OLT before, uh, with our staging policies and they were supported by the OLT. So we have been in that position before. We are very confident that our staging policies that we've had in place in the past that we would like to continue with are very strong and they do provide that controlled growth. Um, at, uh, in, in the next few meetings coming up, you'll see a, um, plan of subdivision. That will, that you'll be able to look at the conditions of approval that talk about that staged and phased growth and have that control in there. So each individual subdivision has their own kind of stage, staging that's assigned to their development. And, um, so I guess that's, that's your answer.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, Counsel Grant.
Uh, thank you. This is maybe a follow-up to Counsel Kado's question, but when we go to the OLT, what is the average cost for us to fight that?
Yeah, through you, uh, Mr. Chair, I don't exactly have a, have an answer for that. It, it does depend on the application. It depends on the number of days that are scheduled at the OLT, what kind of legal support, what, what type of professionals we need. Along with that support, depending on what the scoping of the issues are, or whether or not we can even settle before getting to the OLT. I'm, that's not an answer at all, but.
No, I, it's, sorry, and just to illuminate, maybe it's just I just want to point out that there is a cost associated when we have an OLT fight.
Mayor Shance.
Just along that, that line, um, we've been doing this for, what did we figure out, twenty-five years? And, yeah. Thirty years. How, um, how many times have we had to go to the OLT? Do you know that?
Yeah, and through you, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I, I can't answer that question. I don't know the answer to that. Um, but I, I would advise that whether or not we go with this option. Or we go with an option that we keep the boundaries and, um, the new provincial policy statement does get implemented. Uh, the two thousand and twenty-three provincial policy statement where people could add land through municipal comprehensive review. Um, either way, uh, there is a risk of, um, OLT appeals. So it's either, um, a risk because we're adding land where maybe we don't want to add the land or we're, um, we're putting phasing policies in to control the growth. There's always a risk to OLT.
Leo Brenman.
Yeah, um, so I've been here seventeen years. My only recollection is once that we've been there. In the last seventeen years.
Counsel Kado.
Um, there's been a lot of talk about Bill twenty-three, uh, in association with this discussion. So a question for staff would be. Um, you know, with Bill twenty-three, if it is to come into effect. Could we not go with ROPA six now, but then revisit these boundaries through our own township plan? And then maybe implement some of the portions during that phase?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, yes, uh, Bill twenty-three would give us, uh, delegated approval for, uh, planning responsibilities. So through our five-year official plan reviews, we could look at, uh, boundaries at that time and expanding our boundaries at that time. It would still go to the province for, well, we're assuming, um, when the legislation fully gets, uh, claimed and rolled out. Uh, we're assuming it would still go to the province for approval, but we would have that opportunity, uh, to look at boundaries at that time as well.
Thanks, uh, as I have before, I'll just kind of make some broad, uh, statements. I've read the letter, uh, Mayor Shance. And I appreciate the position that you were put in wasn't the most ideal one. Um, it was a challenging one to say the least. Um, you know, the decision by the province to go ahead and expand these settlement boundaries beyond those that were proposed by our region. It was unexpected. I think that we could all say it was unexpected, but it led us to adapt really rapidly here in Woolwich. And I attest. Uh, the, the success of that has largely been attributed to staff and their ability to quickly adapt and. To a changing landscape from the provincial, uh, perspective. When I'm looking at the legislation to reverse these expansions, um, I think that it does offer us with some opportunities. But it also presents some really serious challenges, halting developments that are underway, even in the planning stages. It's going to disrupt the momentum that we've built towards thoughtful and structured growth. And I don't really want to get in the way of that. Um, I'm sure that we're going to hear a lot about this, uh, from some of the delegates that we have here tonight. Now, while reverting back to ROPA six boundaries offers us environmental protections, it offers us some farmland protections as well. It also limits our ability to plan comprehensively to the benefit of all residents. So this is a complex issue and it's layered in nuance. Um, but I will refer back to the comments that I made two weeks ago. You know, the provincial process, it lacked engagement, it lacked transparency, and it was admittedly flawed. And I think that it's a real challenge for any of us to reasonably stand behind the decision to accept an outcome of a flawed process. So I think that Bill twenty-three does open us an opportunity to revisit some of these lands at a future date. Maybe that is a more principled approach that we should be considering, um, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Counsel Schwind.
I'm a little bit worried we're having a conversation now. We haven't heard from our delegations. And I want to, I think we should be listening to them before we debate pros and cons of any particular letter or position. If that makes sense to counsel or the chair.
Works for me unless anyone wants to get one last word in. All right. All right, let's move on to our first delegation. We got Tom McLaughlin from Thomas Field Homes. Please begin when you are ready.
Thank you, Chair Burgess, Mayor Shance, and members of council. Good evening, uh, my name is Tom McLaughlin. I am a vice president at Thomas Field Homes. We are a family-owned business that's been building in Breslau for the last forty-five years. Um, and sorry, been building for forty-five years and building in Breslau for the last twenty years. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak to the township, uh, regarding the response regarding the winding back of their approved official plan changes. I'm going to keep my delegation short. Uh, we support the mayor's letter to the minister dated December fifth to request that the minister use the countryside line as the boundary as implemented. On the April eleventh changes with the conditions outlined. Um, thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm here to answer any questions.
All right. Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you. Through you to the delegate. Um, I have a couple of questions for you. First one being, um, how many lots do you have that you haven't built on within the last nine months of getting approval? With the approvals being in place, I guess.
So, uh, Breslau is kind of a unique condition. We're limited to seventy-five units or seventy-five single-family homes per year. So, um, that's kind of the major cap on us. We just registered a subdivision and we're about half, well, this time last year, we're about halfway through those lots.
About halfway through. Um, and with moving forward, are you looking to build affordable housing or are you looking to continue with what you currently have? Because as I was looking at your website today, and your smallest home was sixteen hundred square feet. And your townhomes are seven fifty-four nine and your singles were eight sixty-nine nine. I, I think those are above the affordable range and that's one of the concerns we have in the township is providing affordable housing.
I, I would say our houses are the most economic houses in the region right now in terms of sale price. But unfortunately, that is pretty much the price bottom. Uh, you've got to remember, a third of the cost of a house is, uh, development charges. NHST, so that's a third of the house cost.
So are, are you looking to build any smaller homes if things were expanded to make them more affordable?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, we do have a twelve hundred square foot, uh, bungalow model. Right now, we're not selling it because we're out of lots for that size. But we're about to launch a one-car garage that'll probably be the high sevens, low eights, so.
Thank you.
Counsel Kado.
How many lots would you dedicate to those bungalows in a typical subdivision?
Uh, through the chair, it's, it's up to market conditions. It's what people want to buy. Ultimately, we have a, a kind of a slate of homes and it's what the market decides, so.
Through you, Chair, um, maybe in your last development, can you offer some substance?
Of course, uh, I would say the last, so the last year we've sold probably close to fifteen of these bungalow houses. So at the lower end kind of price end.
And that's out of the seventy-five?
Uh, we haven't sold the rest of the seventy-five, so.
Can I ask a couple more questions, if you don't mind? Can you speak specifically to what Thomas Field Homes does to reduce greenhouse gas emissions through their developments?
Uh, so certainly, we, we build very efficient homes, uh, to the building code, so that's, yes.
Um, what green building associations do you belong to and learn from?
Uh, well, we belong, belong to the Ontario Home Builders, which kind of has a kind of full slate of, uh, opportunities there, so.
And anything specific to green initiatives, though?
So the whole, the whole subdivision was built using low-impact design, uh, the, the stormwater ponds were, uh. Were kind of, uh, LID, um, and it's, it's efficient subdivision, so.
Sorry, we just had training on level of efficiency that, uh, the Ontario Building Code, um. Puts forth, and it's not always necessarily the best strategy to, um. You know, conserve energy. So you don't do anything above the building code. You would say that you'd limit your structures to the building.
Yeah, so we built the, uh, the building code. We also use kind of high-efficiency furnaces. And I would say our houses are probably above building code, but we don't test for them. Ultimately, we're here to talk about this subject. I'm glad to have sidebar with you on this subject, but I don't think this is appropriate.
I would certainly welcome that, and I thank you for your time.
All right, see no more questions. Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, for your time. All right, on to our second delegation, Sheena Campbell of People Care Communities. Please begin when you are ready.
Thank you very much. Your worship, Mayor Shance, and hello to all the council members, and I want to thank you all for the opportunity to come and speak with you today. Um, my name is Sheena Campbell and I am from People Care Communities. And, uh, for those of you who may not know, I'll just offer a little bit, uh, about People Care, just briefly. So we are a local, family-owned, mission-driven, uh, leading operator and developer of senior living communities. So that, uh, is long-term care and we also have a retirement home with assisted living component. We have homes primarily in southwestern Ontario with a number of smaller rural homes. And we actually have three homes, uh, long-term care homes in the Waterloo region. And our leadership support office is just down the way on Bridge Street near the Saint Jacob Market. So in December two thousand and twenty-one, we were absolutely thrilled to, uh, join Mayor Shance and the Ministry of Long-Term Care. As they awarded People Care, uh, one hundred and sixty new long-term care bed licenses for the Woolwich community. And it was really a great morning celebrating that exciting announcement. Uh, we were hosted by Rosalind Bentley and team down at the Woolwich Community Health Center. Uh, to make that announcement, and we're really looking forward to partnering, uh, locally to bring more care and services to seniors in this community. Since that announcement, uh, we've looked to accelerate this much-needed long-term care home in this community. And, uh, part of that is sourcing, um, an available site on which to build our new long-term care home. So, uh, to that end, uh, we, you know, conducted a fairly exhaustive search over many, many months. Uh, talking to various Woolwich, uh, landowners and truly have appreciated the support of mayor and the township staff as we explored our options. While we have been able to, um, source an available, uh, viable site. The, uh, viability of the site is actually contingent on some additional lands remaining within the, uh, Saint Jacob urban settlement boundary. And on that note, we'd like to thank you all, mayor, uh, council and staff for hearing perspectives from local organizations like ourselves. About the province's consultation on these boundaries. We did review the mayor's, uh, letter, which is in the package and is noted today. And we do appreciate and support the request being made to the province to allow those additional lands to remain within the settlement boundary. Of course, with staged and controlled growth. Um, just to provide a little context, there are, as of September, forty-three thousand people in Ontario waiting for long-term care. And that's a number, of course, we all know is going to grow as people age. Uh, there's many, many older homes that are already closing or they have their licenses set to expire. So although, you know, a lot of us are working very hard to build new long-term care homes. We want to make sure that we're keeping up with our aging population and their growing needs. So it's very clear to us for People Care that the new long-term care home in Woolwich, uh, is very much needed. What's also clear are the benefits. So a hundred and sixty net new long-term care beds. Around two hundred new jobs for the community. And the opportunity for us to partner with other local organizations to expand and enhance on seniors' housing and care options. So again, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening to speak on this matter. And we really look forward to working together to make this happen for Woolwich, and we'd like to thank you for your ongoing support.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Does counsel have any questions for her? Go ahead, Counsel Grant.
Uh, thank you. Through you to the delegate. I, I, in your letter, and you just mentioned that across the province, about forty thousand people. Do you have any rough idea of how many within the township of Woolwich that are, could be needing long-term care? I know it's probably hard math to do, but.
Well, it's, um, what's actually a little bit hard is that, um, with some of the changes that you can imagine have happened with Ontario Health and that sort of thing. It's a little bit more difficult to get a hold of, uh, up-to-date waitlist information. So I could get that information for you, certainly. But we do know, um, that long-term care, again, across the province, um, and there's, um, local homes. There's a home in, uh, Twin Oaks Maryhill that closed recently, um, and there's other, um, homes within the, the region that are. Uh, their licenses will expire in two thousand and twenty-five, so.
Thank you.
It's a significant, Eva, thank you for the question.
Any other questions for Ms. Campbell? All right, seeing none. Thank you for your time.
Thank you again.
Moving on to our third delegation, uh, we have Mike Pupolo of Polacorp Inc. Please begin when you are ready.
Uh, good evening, mayor, chair and council. I have a, uh, a handout. I, it's time. This'll give you a little bit more, uh, context on our site at fifty-one Hawksville Road. Some site stats and things of that nature that you can produce. So, good evening. My, uh, my name is Mike Pupolo. I'm the co-CEO of Polacorp Inc. Uh, Polacorp Inc. is an integrated land use development company focused on building communities in the region of Waterloo for the past forty years. We've worked on such communities such as Vista Hills, uh, Vista Ridge, uh. We've done infill properties such as Bearon Queen, Lane Kitchener, and we are working on, uh, site in South Point in Cambridge currently. And currently, we're on, under, undertaking, uh, works to complete the Forbes estate, uh, which is a heritage property. I review the letter prepared by Mayor Shance dated December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, addressed to Minister Calandra. Polacorp supports the mayor's recommendation to adopt provincial framework to extend the urban boundaries to the countryside line. This approach will allow for the appropriate planning and staging of growth to service Elmira, Saint Jacobs and Breslau to continue. I note that within your letter, you wish to stage development in township of Woolwich. While we support that, uh, this in principle, a great deal of cost can be associated with servicing the first phase of any development. Given this, we suggest that township consider staging policies that will facilitate servicing costs. Associated with early stages of development and allocation be issued accordingly. I will also note that, um, per your LNA that you provided to the region, uh, June of last year. Um, you were not provided even half of your required community and employment lands. The province decisions provides you more flexibility, specifically with the staging policies in place to control your own destiny. Should the provincial, uh, provincial boundary be maintained, Polacorp will continue to make progress on the fifty-one to fifty-five Hawksville roadside. For the council's information, to date, we have completed a pre-consultation meeting. Uh, for a draft plan of subdivision, official plan amendments and zoning by law amendments. Works to prepare a complete application underway with many reports such as engineering and environmental nearly completed. In anticipation to formally submit applications early in the year. For your information, please see the attached, uh, pre-consultation concept, which we've shown to, uh, Woolwich staff. Um, the highlights of that, um, concept are a mix of housing typologies, including small singles. Townhomes and back-to-back stacked townhomes and a potential for other multi-unit purposes. A density of ju, uh, uh, seventy-three jobs and people per hectare, which is higher than township target, I've, I believe, forty. Um, potential for passive trails, networks and park facilities along the Conestoga River. Um, potential for passive trails, networks and park facilities along the Conestoga River as indicated at the bottom of, of the concept. And it is less than seven hundred meters from downtown St. Jacobs, making it a true fifteen-minute community. You will also note that, uh, on the concept, um, there's a, uh, potential pumping station location which will accommodate the servicing of all the lands, both north and south of Hawksville Road. To that end, we, um, we have aligned our street network to the, to align with those lands to the north per one of, uh, the, I believe, the Schlegel's concept previously, uh, previously shown, I believe, two weeks ago. Preliminary works have confirmed that servicing of our lands is feasible and necessary capacity is available. The proposed servicing strategy considers all the lands brought into the settlement boundary within northwest of St. Jacobs. Given this, we will work collaboratively with the adjacent landlords, which I believe, uh, some, some will delegate after me on their lands to comprehensively realize development of northwest St. Jacobs. Should the province agree with the preferred growth strategy, we look forward to continuing to work with the township staff to bring additional housing opportunities to St. Jacobs. Thank you. I welcome any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? All right, seeing none. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, now go on to welcome our next delegation here, Von Bender from Schlegel Urban Developments. Please begin when you are ready.
Thank you, Chair Burgess and, uh, Mayor Shantz, members of council. Could I ask the clerk to perhaps put on the screen the first, uh, map that's in my, uh, written submission? We addressed, uh, council at your November twentieth meeting and provided written input that night, uh, regarding the specific, um, uh, twenty-four acre Stuart Martin lands at the north end of the village of St. Jacobs, lying immediately west of Calvary United Church and contiguous with the Gillis-Friede lands to the immediate north. On November twentieth, you also heard directly from Stuart Martin. Mr. Martin's here again tonight with his son Scott. Uh, we've once again provided written input this evening to your deliberations and, uh, Mr. Martin has done the same. I, I won't read that letter, but we'll try and, uh, make some, uh, briefer comments. I want to reiterate that, uh, Schlegel Urban Developments was an active and engaged participant in the region of Waterloo official plan process. We retained our own land economists midway through when it was apparent to us that a comprehensive land need assessment from the region's consultants was not going to be provided at what we felt was the appropriate stage. As well, it was the opinion of our experts that the region's LNA was taking a different approach in terms of the provincial methodology with regard to range and mix of market-based demand for housing. There were many other participants in the region's lengthy ROP process that also disagreed with the region's consultants, Dylan and Watson, and their LNA analysis. I know that's not what you're deliberating tonight, but the point that I'm making is that there was not necessarily unanimous support for the region's one hundred and fifty-one hectare outcome. I'll fast forward to tonight. I know that none of us envisioned in April of twenty twenty-three that the provincial reset of that time, uh, or that the reset of October, November would be put, put upon us and put upon you as a council. That said, we ask you to consider the following. We submit that there is an acknowledged housing supply challenge and an affordability challenge. It's national, provincial, and it's a challenge locally and in many ways an increasingly local challenge due to the success and resiliency of our local economy. More people are coming to Waterloo region and fewer are leaving than even in the last couple of years. We submit that the focus before council this evening is not about what the province did or did not recommend in April, but more in fact about how Woolwich wishes to shape its own communities and support local employment. About how Woolwich wishes to advance local housing, be it affordable, general market, supportive housing or housing for seniors. All forms are part of the solution. Can move to, uh, map number two. We submit that the St. Jacobs Northlands are an excellent example of an area that warrants a great comprehensive plan. And working with the township and our neighbors, we know that we can accomplish this task together. We note that the mayor's letter calls out this opportunity in the St. Jacobs land area. The Schlegel family has been proud to be a part of Woolwich's economic development success since taking on the St. Jacobs Market District operations from the Shantz family in twenty eighteen. As builders of complete master-planned, sustainable residential communities, we wish to work with the township planning and engineering staff and this council to contribute well-thought-out, well-phased and complete neighborhoods to Woolwich as we have done elsewhere in the region. We could go to the next map. We have, uh, relatively recently invested in the Southwood Five land area in Almyra. And we similarly believe we are well-positioned to help complete this long-planned residential area. Local planning now for lands to the west and implementation of extending Barnswallow Drive through lands on which complete community planning could be advanced allows, as the mayor's letter indicates, a more holistic consideration of Almyra transportation needs. In conclusion, we appreciate the process leading up to this evening has been multi-year and with some provincial, provincial twists and turns, no doubt. We believe that thoughtful and progressive approach of the Woolwich, uh, township to planning healthy and great communities is an outcome which can be best achieved locally through the direction of the mayor's December fifth letter. And I might just add, um, in, in case I'm not asked the questions, but recently Schlegel Urban Developments has embarked on getting into the, uh, purpose-built rental market. We're building right now our first thirty-two unit back-to-back stacked project in, uh, Kitchener uh, with many two and three-bedroom, uh, units. Um, and that is part of our, our business plan, our strategic planning to, um, add to that portfolio of, uh, rental options or housing options, uh, in Waterloo region. We've also in the past participated with one of our builders, Lead, uh, Reed's Heritage Homes to build a lead platinum home. That was many years ago. And presently, we have builders working on our sites that are implementing gray water systems, uh, solar-ready homes. Um, you know, full Tesla, um, power grid systems and so on. And, uh, we would welcome, uh, an opportunity in the future to, um, to, or, you know, members of council staff that are interested through some of the homes that, uh, our builders are building. Thank you.
Thank you for that delegation and that offer there. Do we have any questions from council? All right, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our next delegation. Mike Gillies of one-six-zero-four-nine-six-two Ontario Inc. Please begin when you are ready.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairperson, uh, Mayor Shantz, um, council and staff. Uh, my name is Mike Gillis and I'm here representing myself and Richard Friedy, uh, owners of one, uh, one-six-zero-four-nine-six-four Ontario and, uh, and owners of the lands in the northwest area of St. Jacobs. Uh, we were here two weeks ago, um, presenting our lands, um, and then, as you saw in Mr. Bender's presentation, uh, they are in the area north of Hawksville Road, uh, in the area of the provincially expanded settlement boundary. And our lands front onto Northside Drive, which is fully serviced. And we have fi- five acres of land, uh, within the settlement boundary. Uh, we are here tonight to express our support for the letter of, um, Mayor Shantz to the Minister of Housing. Uh, we believe that this approach, uh, will lead to a more collaborative, a more well-thought-out um, and, um, a more, much more efficient process in the, in the long run for the benefit of the village of St. Jacobs. Uh, this approach will also allow us to continue, uh, with our development application. And our development application will bring much-needed, uh, housing for seniors in St. Jacobs and will, um, assist in the development of seniors' care facility in St. Jacobs. And we believe, again, that this is to the benefit of the people of St. Jacobs and the township of Woolwich, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Any questions from council? All right, thank you for your time, Mr. Gillis. All right, we have received three written delegations, which were included in the revised agenda package for council's consideration and for the public record. I'll now go ask Clerk Smith, are there any unregistered participants in the meeting tonight that would like to speak?
Yeah, it's for you, Mr. Chair. I did ask, uh, if there are any unregistered, uh, members that would like to speak, and, uh, there was at least one person under section sixty-four of your procedural bylaw. With the majority vote of council, you can allow unregistered speakers to speak for five minutes.
All right, I'll put that on council. Would anyone like to move that? Moved by Mayor Shantz and seconded by Counselor Bryant. All those in favor? And that's carried. All right, Clerk, Clerk Smith, if you just want to specify the timing and that for the delegate?
Yeah, so, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, unregistered, unregistered delegates will have five minutes to speak. Um, if there's anyone, I just suggest the chair maybe, uh, look for hands from the audience and then they can come up, uh, one by one.
All right, who would like to go first? Who would be interested? All right, go ahead. See, I have five minutes to speak.
Good evening, councillor, Mayor Shantz and council and everyone else here. John Messina, again, I've probably seen me up here several times. Um, we've been around one-sixty-five Bloomingdale where we have just shy of three acres. It borders on to the city of Kitchener and obviously the township. All the services are there. Bus routes, you name it, it's all there. We've been asking council and the township of Woolwich for probably thirty-three plus years to consider this small parcel. We want to work with you guys. We really do. But you guys have just been pushing against us over all the years and saying that wait for the next regional official plan update and then the next one and the next one. And here we are today yet. And I haven't got any clue on what to do. We want to work with you guys. We'd love to do low-income housing, condos, one-bedrooms, whatever it takes, but we do want to develop this piece of property. We feel that it's got all the marks for it. It checks every box that you ask for or that the regional official plan asks for. It is within a fifteen-minute of, of the city, like I said, bus routes, services, everything is there. Yet, we just don't seem to get the acceptance from the township. So I would like the township, again, to look at one-sixty-five Bloomingdale Road. And give me your honest answers on that there and what we could possibly do. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from council? Go ahead, Counselor Shun.
Um, this is for delegate more for staff. Is this a parcel land that would be pertinent for this letter? Or is this more of the, when we do our township official plan where we'd identify parcels and have that conversation?
Uh, through the chair to, uh, councillor. Um, so through the regional official plan, it looked at, through this stage of the regional official plan, it looked at urban areas, which include Bresla and township urban areas, which include St. Jacobs and Almyra. Other areas, the smaller settlement areas, were not reviewed in this round of the, of the regional official plan and are not subject to this letter. Uh, they will be considered through the township official plan or the second phase of the regional official plan if Bill twenty-three does not get proclaimed. So we have not looked at those areas at this time.
So just follow up then, when will we be reviewing our official plan to consider parcels like this?
Uh, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so we have started our official plan review. Um, we were waiting or we are waiting for the second round of the regional official plan review as well, so, um, depending on what happens with Bill twenty-three and whether or not the regional official plan second phase gets completed or not, then we'll be able to also do our update to our official plan. So the visual plan review that we're working on right now would update, uh, our official plan to the, um, regional official plan. Uh, so the amount of time that it would take, I guess, whether, when the timing would be for looking at the broader or, uh, rural settlement areas. I think we'll, we'll start it through our official plan review next year. If that's enough timing, but, um, I can't say when it would actually get completed. So, hey, we're currently in the official plan review process right now, but we're just starting out the process. Um, and we really, it depends on what happens with the proclamation of Bill twenty-three for when we actually get to the next phase. So we're working on it through, uh, we'll be working on it through twenty twenty-four.
Please understand that.
All right, thank you. All right, are there any other unregistered participants that would like to speak? All right. I think that's everyone. Um, do we want to circle back to the original letter and have discussion on that? Sounds good. All right, who wants to lead us off here? Go ahead, Counselor Shun.
Oh, yeah, I've got some comments on letter. I'm afraid as council, we're getting, we're having three conversations on this letter and there are three different issues. And we do have to make sure that we separate them nor do a good job of responding to what the province has decreed to us. So I see is having a discussion on the planning and settlement boundaries. I think that's the real thing we need to be talking about, but we're also mixing in a provincial process that at best is flawed. We could have a few other adjectives, but it's not a good one. It's going to make for a less than optimal solution. But, but I believe we have to set that aside because we've been elected to serve residents of Woolwich. These are the rules of the province gave us. We have to adapt. So I think we do need to strictly look at the planning and settlement boundary issues. We've also understand, we know there's a climate crisis and housing shortage in this province. At the same time, we're talking about the land use. We're not talking about how we're going to build these houses or what type of houses they're going to be. So we've got to separate that whole huge issue from our minds. We just need to look at the settlement boundaries in my mind. So because of that, just looking at settlement boundary issue, I believe this isn't black or white. And the ROPA six was very black and white. That really constrained us. The provincial guidelines were really broad. And either way, we're going to get OLT appeals. That's just reality. But at the end of the day, for me personally, I'd rather Woolwich be in charge of planning and staging and deciding your own destiny rather than the region or the province, because the province may have changed their minds four times. So because of that, I think the mayor's letter is the best, best outcome for the residents in our community and a way to keep on moving forward as we have in the last couple of years and allow us to stage our growth appropriately. So I'm going to support it.
Go ahead, Counselor Bryant.
Thank you. Um, I will say that I agree with Nathan's statements. I think it was a flawed process. It was not transparent. And my thoughts are, I would go back to the ROPA six. I feel the region made these decisions. They did the indigenous consultations. They are protecting our farmland, which I think is a very important thing to consider going forward. We can't feed people off of developments. We need to keep that farmland intact as much as possible and intensify where we can. So in my mind, my thought is go back to ROPA six.
Go ahead, Mayor Shantz.
Um, just, just to respond to, to Counselor Bryant, um, using our own official plan to stage growth, uh, gives just as much protection, uh, as rope as six does. Um, and, and it gives us the control of how we, uh, how we develop and particularly Bresla. I, I mean, we've heard developers here today for more for St. Jacobs and, uh, and Almyra, but uh, well, we did a Bresla here too, but it does give us, um, more opportunity to, to do a complete planning and a complete community in Bresla, so. More opportunity to, to do a complete planning and a complete community in Breslau, so. Just be my comment on that.
Go ahead, Counselor Grant.
Thank you through you to the rest of council. Um, I really struggle with this and I'm, I'm sure we're all kind of grappling with this. Um, when I look at rope, I look at it as a, from the perspective of this was a really local led. Uh, planning endeavor that took into account a lot of different voices and opinions. Um, but I also struggle with. The amount of work that we've already put into a provincial plan and. I would love to see staged growth. I, my fear is just I don't know if it's going to something we can manage. Or if it's something that the province will even allow us to do. Um, that being said, uh, at this stage, I would support the letter. Um. Because I think if we can get a staged approach, it's to our benefit, but I, I just want to, I want to raise the flag that I'm not sure if it's something that we're able to do.
Counselor Schwenk.
Very good points, Counselor Grant. I'll throw back that. It's a province won't give a staged goals. There's no way it allows us to back to ROPA six. Because this letter, I think, is a compromise to what the province is trying to get to.
Any last discussion on this before we move on? Mayor Shantz.
And I'm happy to send this letter, um, with the support of council. Um. If I could. I, I, I don't know if you want to do that with a, with a motion, I would. Let's give it a try. I would move, uh, that, uh. Council supports, uh, sending this letter to Minister Calander in, in response to his request.
I get the mover. Counselor Schwenk, so on the second.
I thought I was seconding, sorry.
I moved it, yes, sorry. All right, any farther discussion for? All right, all those in favor?
Can we get a, um? Oh my gosh, I lost my word. Thank you, recorded vote. I was going to say counted vote.
All right, I'll pass that on to Clerk Smith.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, we do a recorded vote, uh, by calling names in a random order. Um, I will, uh, ask if you're in favor of the motion, which is that council supports sending the letter that is, uh, included in your agenda package. Uh, Mayor Shantz.
In favor.
Um, Counselor Schwenk.
In favor.
Uh, Counselor Bryant.
Opposed.
Uh, Counselor Grant.
In favor.
And Counselor Burgess.
In favor.
And I'm sorry, and Counselor Caddo.
Opposed.
Sorry. I was going too fast here. Uh. Yes, uh, that motion passes with four votes in favor and two votes opposed.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
All right, thank you. Now moving on. We have no unfinished business. And moving on to our consent items. We have one item for approval. And one item for information. Does anyone on council wish to discuss these items or would someone like to move them up? Move a motion to receive it? Counselor, could? Go ahead, Mayor Shantz.
Yeah. I see, um, yeah, the letter from, uh, Extend a Family requesting, uh, just let me pull this up here.
That'll be the next item after this, if that's.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right, so was that moved by Counselor Caddo? Seconded by Counselor Bryant. Any last discussion on that? And all those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. All right. Moving on to items pulled from the information package. So here we have the letter from Extend a Family requesting council's endorsement. Of Ontario Disability Support Program Rate Increase Motion. Mayor Shantz, as you made the request for this item, would you like to speak to that?
It was just a, a letter that I received that I thought would be worth considering to, uh, support. It's really just asking. For, uh, for, um. Uh, to, 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 uh, support a motion urging the province to raise the ODSP and OW rates. So I do know that the folks on, uh, on ODSP and OW are, are. Definitely struggling with, uh, with rent and food and all of the other, uh. Daily costs that, that, uh, occurred to us, so. Um, I just put it out there for, for council if anyone. Thinks it's worthy of support.
I would certainly motion that. I think that it's a wonderful cause. Um, you know, really. Speaking to those who are, you know, most economically disadvantaged in our society, so I would be something that I would be happy to move. Thanks for bringing to attention.
So that is moved by Counselor Caddo?
Yeah, I would second as well. I think it is a valid or it's a worthwhile, uh, letter to put forward. Um, we know that people on ODSP live on the edge of poverty and with the rate of inflation, I think we need to see an increase in those funds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Before we put it to motion? All right, all those in favor? All right, and that's carried. All right, moving on to staff reports and memos. Our first report here is a transfer payment agreement for the Rural Economic Development Program. And tonight we have the Economic Development Tourism Officer. Derek Hughes to present the report. Please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, to you, Mr. Chair, to council. Um. Staff is seeking to, uh, get authorization for the mayor and clerk to, um, enter into agreement with the OMAFRA, uh, RED program. Uh, this is an initiative, uh, from a former, or from a, a previous staff member, um. Which would, uh, incur an expenditure of twenty-two thousand five hundred, uh, in two thousand and twenty-five. In which, uh, they would, uh, we'd be entering into a fifty percent cost share program. Uh, with, uh, OMAFRA, uh, for the rest of the twenty-two thousand five hundred. Um, I, I feel it would be necessary, um, to enter in to this agreement. Um, to be more efficient in, uh, in strategic in implementing the BRNE. Um, action items. Uh, I was in a, uh, meeting with, uh, RTO four. And, uh, a tourism meeting and I, I, I realized that, um, I was the only one representing Woolwich, obviously, uh, as a business development and, um. And tourism officer and. Center Wellington had three tourism officers or three, two, three people directed to. Uh, directly in the tourism department as well as two, um, business, uh, economic, economic development. Uh, roles. As well as Stratford had the same. And I believe it'd be a little bit more efficient, um, to, uh, tender to this agreement and, uh. Now, it wouldn't, we would be looking to, uh, for council's funding and or. Um, partnership funding and or grants to, uh, to fund our portion of the, uh, of the, uh, agreement there.
All right, thank you. Does council have any questions for Mr. Hughes? Mayor Shantz.
So this is for the twenty twenty-five budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions, Counselor Caddo?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to Derek. Um. We heard from the BIA today and I think that you had referenced this document in your response to the BIA. Um, I'm wondering if you could maybe draw some parallels between rural economic development. And, you know, a community improvement plan. Do you see them going hand in hand? You know, when you're talking about. Uh, BRNE, business retention and expansion, I'm assuming. Um. You know, are, how are we engaging with our businesses that are already here through our BIAs? Um. Does that make sense? Sorry, I kind of trailed off there a little bit, didn't I? You can make sense out of some of that, I'm sure.
Sure, sure, sure. Can you, can you repeat the last part, please? Did you remember the last part?
Um. Let me try again. Uh, so I think this is a wonderful initiative, really looking at rural economic development. Uh, we're talking about our community improvement plan today as well. Do you see? Uh. Ways in which they can dovetail together, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Mr. Brenneman, CAO would like to speak to that?
So I just want to help, um, through you, Mr. Chair, I just want to help out with this conversation, just, um, piecing the two together. So I just want to make, I just want to make sure council's comfortable first on, on this particular piece. Um, you recall Jenna previously presented the actual results. Of the COVID recovery, business retention and expansion program. And so, um, with her maternity leave, she wasn't able to take it to the next level. Um, but she was able to access this, um, red, um, funding. And so the idea is by the time she comes back and we implement this side of the program. It's the implementation side of the COVID recovery. And she's been very good in terms of getting matching funding. Um, from various levels. I think we had a presentation from Jenna. Previous year, so, um. I want to, I want to make sure you understand that specifically. This is, you know. This is a, a staff position to help with the implementation of the, uh, BRNA COVID recovery plan. With respect to the, with respect to the CIP. Um, I think, I think, you know, it would be helpful if we sat down. Um, and, and I'd love to be part of the conversation in terms of. What we actually have the capacity for. Um, because, um, you know, certainly, uh, there were some elements that, that seemed to be. That, you know, easy and no brainers for me in terms of, um, of, um. Making, uh, use of our social media and promote. The program and the availability of the program. What I would need to sit down to really understand is, you know, is the assumption that there's capacity. Um, based on what we're already doing, um, you know, between planning and economic development to do the other stuff. Um, I just don't want to be able to make that commitment on behalf of, of Derek. Or even Deanne and her staff because I see an overlap. With CIB, CIP implementation between. Planning and development or development services and, and economic development. It's certainly no doubt, um, CIPs are, are worthwhile programs. Um, and, you know, when the whole CIP has come up before. Um, my recollection is the reason that. We didn't take that on is because of the amount of. Work that we had already within development services or economic development at that time. So I think what would be helpful. Is to have an offline discussion with the BIE. BIA to see what we might have the capacity for and develop some timelines. There may be some stuff that we can do. In the early stages. And then have to look at, say. You know, six months or a year down the road, you know, and, and map out short, medium and long term. Uh, I think that's a better game plan. In order to map out. How we can best support in turn, instead of being able to. Unequivocally stand up here tonight and say, yeah, everything that you asked for, we can, we can do all that. But I think it requires a bit of conversation in terms of what that actually looks like, so.
Counselor Schwenk.
Unfortunately, I'm getting more confused. Um, so through this program, are we authorizing hiring additional staff person? Or are we looking at? Additional tasks, existing staff are going to have to do and we're going to juggle roles and responsibilities in twenty twenty-five?
So, no. This is a, this is a temporary contract staff person. Under the red funding that would be matched by OMAFRA. So we, we did the same thing. When we, when, so, so, um, we did a, um, a similar sort of grant program. Uh, in terms of Jenna had, um, a temporary support staff. Um, when we actually did the BRNE program. And then the idea is, is that we, we actually applied for the grant now to implement the actual outcomes. So it's not a full-time staff position. It's a temporary contract position.
That's an important distinction for me, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think it's a great initiative and I'd be willing to move the recommendation.
All right, that's moved by Counselor Caddo to, can anyone second that? Mayor Shantz. Any farther discussion on that? Counselor Grant?
Uh, thank you through you to the rest of council. I would, uh, generally supportive of this. I would agree. I don't know if we need a motion at all, but like, um, staff direction to sit down with the BIA. To discuss kind of that timeline that Mr. Brenneman kind of spoke about. As well. Jeff would probably know better.
Seeing nods from a few of you. That's all right.
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, I think that staff can just take that as direction. I think that's sufficient. Um, if, I, I think, uh, Counselor Caddo moved the, the motion that's, uh, in the recommendation on the report, so maybe we can do that. And if there's anything else for staff, we can do that after.
I seconded that as well.
All right. So vote on it now, all those in favor? And that's carried by everyone. All right. Any last comments on that? And yeah, additional direction? All right, moving on. To project twenty-five voice radio service level agreement. We have Fire Chief Dennis Aldous here to present his report. Please go ahead when you're ready.
Good evening, um, Mayor, Counselor and, uh, Counselor. Um, so the P twenty-five radio system, when you read through the report, you would have seen that it was originally brought to council. Back in December of two thousand and thirteen. Um, since that time, it has been, uh, initiated through, uh, all parts of the region, not just the police and, uh, fire departments. It's used by the region, the GRT, the ION, um, all the cities for different facets of their work. Um. So through that whole process and around two thousand and nineteen, we started working on the service agreement. And which is a little bit before my time as chief, but in two thousand and twenty-one, I believe, um. It was pushed over to the CAO's offices of. All the municipalities in order to finalize this, uh, agreement, which is we have in front of us now. So I guess the recommendation is, is that mayor and council be able to authorize by the township in order to sign this agreement. Is there any questions at all on this? Agreement?
Any questions for Chief Aldous? Counselor Caddo?
Could we opt out of this and just stick with the six thousand dollar price tag?
Um, through Chair to Counselor Caddo, uh, no, we're embedded in this tightly now. It's. It was, we were embedded in the old system that was there as well. It's just this new one is more technologically advanced and has more upkeep to. Um, the pieces and parcels of it, so.
I assume that was the answer, but I thought I would ask.
Counselor Bryant?
Thank you. Through you to Dennis. Has this hundred and fifteen thousand been worked into the budget or? Is this an extra ask?
Um, through Chair to Counselor Bryant, um, this is in the budget. That was in. The two thousand and fifteen is factored in the, that was our twenty twenty-two value that we had paid. So the increase, annual increase has been factored into the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four budget process.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Or the chief? All right. Seeing none, um, there's a recommendation in the report. Is anyone willing to move it? All right, moved by Counselor Grant and seconded by Counselor Bryant. All those in favor? And that's carried. Right, next we have a report on fees and charges for twenty twenty-four. And we have CAO David Brenneman to present the report. And Deanne Fries for correction. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, so I just wanted, uh, Mr. Chair through you to council to, to just introduce this subject. Um, it's become commonplace for us in advance of the budget process to in, introduce. Um, what we see as the fees and charges by law. As you can appreciate, it's important. Um, that we get your support for where the direction is because obviously it influences the budget process. And discussions that you ultimately are going to have. Uh, come, uh, January of twenty twenty-four. Um. Certainly, um, certainly each of the departments you would have seen has had influence with respect to. Uh, whether there are or there aren't increases and they provide the appropriate justification within the report. I'll leave my comments at that for now and all the department heads are available. Should we have any specific questions on any of their sections?
Did you want to chime in for a service? Freeze there?
Uh, yes, sorry. So, uh, the. Commentary under the Development Services section in the report explains a few changes, but I noticed that the. but I noticed that the schedule that was attached to the one bylaw on page 278 and 283 of your package didn't reflect those changes that were noted in the text. So I just have two small changes that one would be under alterations and renovations that a residential charge will be separated from the ICI charge, the institutional industrial commercial charge and be added at 50 cents per square foot. And then on the page 283 of your package, there's some commentary to explain how the the deposit, the refundable deposit would be implemented and how it would be refunded less any additional inspection fees or unpaid invoices. So that wording just needs to be in there as well. If council approves these, these changes, I can make those changes on the final round of the bylaw before it comes back to council on the December 12th agenda for passing.
All right, thank you for that update there. Does council have any questions for either of them? Counselor Shunt?
I know this is a conversation we had a month or so ago, but $25 for roadside stands. I guess this is something that I'm struggling with two reasons. One, it's not worth our time to collect $25 and two, it's, it's a bit of an overreached charge Suzie for selling flowers in the lane. And I don't see us gaining much, if anything, from this information that they're actually there. If they're on our property or a place where they shouldn't be because of that, that we're going to catch them through that process as being on our property, not the fact they've got a roadside stand. So I would like to see that one removed from the fees and charges by law.
Yep, Ms. Freeze?
The fee has been reduced from 250 to 25. The only reason for the fee to be in there is just so that we are aware of where those roadside stands are there. So it facilitates that application. We can confirm that they are set back from the property line and from the road right away. And meet the requirements of the zoning by law.
Any other discussion on that particular topic or just in general for either of them?
Through you, can we not just ask people to register with the township to run a roadside stand versus paying a fee? Would that work? This, just a thought. I, I just, I don't like charging them $25 just to operate a produce stand or sell flowers. If they just have an option to sign, sign in type of thing.
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, we could choose to just register or have an application with no fee. If $25 was just the quick little fee to recover our time to review the stands.
Mayor Shuntz?
Do we have a definition of roadside stand? Like, so for example, Suzie puts her flowers out at the end of the road with a sign that says, I don't know, five bucks a dozen, whatever.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Well, just take me a few minutes to find the definition and I can share it.
Any other discussion while she's, yeah, go ahead, Counselor Shunt?
So I sort of understand the rationale. We want to know what and see if they are in the right spot. But won't we find out by just as many or more, because if they're on our property, the roads could going by, going a few of their activities or there'll be some other reporting mechanism. It's not going to be because they have to register. So I don't see any net gain from the township I have in this administrative process to go through. I just see a time and cost incurred by both parties.
Counselor Cadell?
What would the liability be if we just did away with it and there were some events because of the offsets or something? And I don't know that staff would have an answer for that, but surely there would be some issues with liability if we just didn't know.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I don't have the, I don't have a legal opinion on what the liability would be. If we received a complaint, it would go through the, then the bylaw enforcement division and we would go out there and look at it at that time. And I do have a definition for harm produce stand. It means a building or a portion thereof or open outdoor area within the retail sale. Oh, sorry, wherein the retail sale produce is primarily grown and raised on the site and are offered for sale to the public. It may include the limited sale and of produce grown offsite, baking and preserves made from produce onsite and flowers from elsewhere in the township.
I would be fine with Counselor Swin's suggestion just to, to remove it completely. I don't know that a registration system would be a value either. I think that it's just going to do more to eat up staff's time if there's no real value in registering and collecting fees and just stop doing it.
Counsel's thought on removing the $25 and go ahead, Counselor Bryant?
I would make a motion that we remove that particular item from the fees and charges.
Go ahead, Counselor Shunt. So just to clarify for Clerk Smith and I, we're going to be making a motion, we can just amend the original motion that will approve the fees as presented with the amendment of removing the $25.
If, if council's okay with it, it probably would be simpler to do a motion to approve as attached with the removal of the $25. If that's what council wants to do, if there's a series of, of changes and, and we're going to get more complicated, maybe it is good to do it a separate motion on each item, but if that's, if there's not more, basically I'm saying that's probably just easier to do, approve as amended.
Do you want us to remotion that or is that okay?
I think that's okay. Then I, I just look for a mover and a second or for the motion in the report with the amended $25.
All right, Counselor Cadell? Moves, yeah, and then second, yeah, Counselor Shunt? All right, all those in.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, so if you're okay with that, Ms. Freeze just reminded me that she brought up some changes that she asked to make. So if you're okay with that, it'll be the motion that's on in the recommendation with the removal of the $25 for the roadside stands and the changes that, that Ms. Freeze noted earlier. And there's a first and second or Counselor Cadell and Counselor Swint, if there's, I would go for any more discussion and then call the question.
Any last discussion on that? All right, all those in favor? And that's carried. All right, moving on to the next report here, purchasing by law update. Next, we have the Director of Infrastructure Services, Jared Poupé.
Thank you, Chair Burgess. Sorry, thank you, Chair Burgess, and through you to members of council. We have a purchasing by law update before council this evening. This is a, this is something that hasn't been updated since 2015 and there are really three overarching reasons for the update to occur. One of the main reasons was that we have been utilizing a digital platform for procurement. Typically, we have been using EBIT's program and the, the previous bylaw did not reflect that. So that was one of the major reasons that the update is before you. While that update was occurring, we did look at the thresholds. Lots has changed as council is well aware since 2015 regarding procurement and purchasing. So staff did look at the, the thresholds and, and council can see that in the report that the thresholds for tender have been elevated from $75,000 currently to 150,000. And the consulting fees have gone up to, and I apologize, I believe it's a to to up to 75,000 for consulting services. I apologize. And that is all contained. That's an important reference guide, which is the attachment to is contained in the report. And then the other consideration was when doing procurement or any purchases that there would be consideration by the purchaser to respect the environment and climate change as well, while going through procurement. So I think that the, the biggest piece here are the, the thresholds and compliance with what practices are currently happening. Again, this is an important bylaw that all departments are involved with. And with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions from Counselor, Counselors for Mr. Poupé? Counselor Grant?
Thank you. Through you to, uh, Mr. Poupé. When we look at our neighboring townships, what is the kind of basis that they have for their procurement? Like where, where are we matching basically?
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Chair Burgess to Counselor Grant. So did reach out to our neighboring townships and currently two of the townships are, their tender thresholds are $100,000. We're currently 75,000. I remind council, we are the largest township and not the highest in the procurement side. And the other township would be at the $50,000 threshold. So we think this is an appropriate threshold to 150,000. It's going to help us with a number of typical, I would say, operating type programs. Some of these are contained in the capital program as well, sidewalk programming. Some of our annual programming, we would typically fall under this threshold. So it does, it does provide an efficiency in that these are, these are something I think it's very important to note to council as well that these are contained in the budget and they will be deliberated through with the budget process coming forward. So that is where council would improve, would approve those thresholds up to anything, obviously over and above the $150,000 would require a tender award report that council would then see and approve. So I think that's important as well. It's just a little bit more efficient for us instead of having the, or the time that does take to go through an SMT process and get it onto an council agenda. So I think all, all said and done, this is really just an efficiency and it is in line with what we're seeing our neighboring township municipalities are doing as well.
Any other questions from council? All right, there's a recommendation in the report. Is anyone willing to move it? Counselor Grant seconded by Counselor Cadell. Any farther discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. All right, moving on to other business, 2024 budget schedule. Here we have Mr. Brenneman who would like to speak to that. Please go ahead when you are ready.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, through you to council. One of the things that we wanted to talk with council about tonight is the twofold is the fact that one, because of some staffing situations that currently exist in finance, we would like council's considerations to flip around the January schedule and have some sort of either committee council or special council meeting at the beginning, beginning of the month. And then actually do the budget in the last week, last two weeks of January, the weeks of the 22nd and the 29th. We are, we are also aware of the opportunity where if staff have had the ability to talk with some members of council, that there may be an interest and we're certainly willing to explore with council. And that's why we wanted to use tonight as well to look at, at whether it makes efficient sense to look at a couple, one or two daytime meetings and then one or two nighttime meetings, some combination thereof. But I figure we're all good at, at figuring out what that might work, look like and work for work for council. We know there has been some interest from some members of council with respect to that. So those are the two requests that we would like to sort out now that we're in December for January. So that, you know, certainly we can make efficient use of our time. And, you know, just recognizing we have some staff capacity challenges right now. And so in light of those staff capacity challenges, that's where we need to flip. And then how can we best go through the budget process this year? With some potential changes to how we meet in terms of daytime and nighttime meetings. You know, to that end, I'll just expand a little bit. We had the opportunity. We had the opportunity to talk at senior management at our weekly meeting this week. I know there had been some thought to the fact that, you know, maybe we only need one daytime meeting and certainly be able to plow through efficiently, effectively all of the various department presentations. The only concern that came up from senior staff was we have to remember that a lot of the directors have their teams of managers there for those meetings. So we weren't sure if we plowed through all of that and then we have, say, two or three other debate nights. We'd still have to figure out then which, which departments are going to be debated that night to be able to have the management there behind, for example, Jared having Carter and other staff there, Deanne having Jeremy and building staff there, et cetera. Because, you know, historically, we, we, we've been having the directors supported by their senior staff as well. So that's the only concern, but I'm sure we can talk through all of this and work out the appropriate logistics. But just I'll open with those comments and, and see what council's feelings are on, on some of that.
Mayor Shuntz?
I'm, I'm certainly open to, to changes. I'm, I'm not quite following the issue with what staff to have there. If we have four evening meetings, how is that different from if we have two daytime meetings?
So I'm not, I'm not suggesting, so I was trying to, I was trying to frame that if we had only one. So the way I understand it, we talked about, let's say we looked at having only one daytime meeting and we plowed through all the department budgets. But I think some of the input that we've received is the other nights, then we could reserve for debates and questions, right? But what, what we, we didn't know was how do we best schedule those? Or how do we best schedule them to make sure we know what departments are going to be debated those nights? So that the directors know when to have their senior staff there to help them with questions and debate. I don't know if senior staff can help me. Maybe I'm not explaining it well enough, but I welcome any support from senior staff.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so the, the one proposal that David was just talking about, we would do all the presentations one night. So all of our managers, all the directors would be here to do their presentations.
One day.
What did I say? One day.
It is night now.
Um, and but there would be no debate, no discussion, no debate. And then the following dates, we would have that debate, but we wouldn't know which days we would be debating which department's budget. So then we would need to have our managers at all of those meetings or we would need to schedule them in for whatever was going to be debated. The other alternative is that we deal with the full budget for each department with their managers there and have the debate the same time so that our managers only have to come to the one meeting with the one time. And then the directors would be there for all the time.
What, what were we planning to do when we had four evening meetings?
Uh, we, we, we had each of the department scheduled on a particular night.
So we'd hear and then debate?
Yep.
So.
So this would be like, you'd have the full presentation one day, you could go away and deliberate and then we could just schedule like the Monday night, we're having these two departments, the two, the Thursday night, we're having these two departments. Cause I believe last year, that's what we did. We'd have two departments for one night, but this sounds like we'd have a full presentation, a full overview. We could go away and then come back and have our debates with those specific departments.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, I, I, I think it's conceivable that we could still have some variation of what we did. But I think the idea that I, I got some, some of the feedback in advance of this, this meeting was the notion that would it not be helpful for council, you know, in either one day or over two days to be able to plow through all the department budgets and presentations? And then reserve the night meetings for the debate, you know, the debate and discussion about, you know, changes, cuts, you know, all of that sort of stuff. But again, I don't want to speak, you know, I want, I don't want to speak for some of you that had the, the idea, you know, because ultimately we wanted to discuss it here as part of this meeting to say, okay, you know, what can we as council and senior staff come up with that works for both parties to make it most efficiently effective? And also create a, a, an appropriate balance as well.
Counselor Bryant?
Um, thank you. It was my understanding from conversations that we do one daytime. Um, thank you, it was my understanding from conversations that we do one daytime meeting to plow through everything and then there'd basically be two nights. Involved, we cut the, the time down, that you take one night, do a couple of departments, another night to do the other departments. And that would be it versus having four different nights, you'd have the one day and then two evenings, but maybe I mis- misread it.
Councillor Schwen.
I think that was my original thought and intent, I can see staff's. Point that maybe two daytime meetings shorter is more effective, I think. Two reasons for the daytime in my mind is I think we, as council, are in better shape and they will learn faster and better. On daytime meeting than at eleven o'clock at night, and if we can have staff. Meet with us during business hours, I think that's fair to staff whenever we can. But I also believe we need to have at least two. Evening sessions for the public to come in, delegate if required and see us have a debate. So I was hoping that would be a happy medium, whether it's one or two daytime meetings. May I'm easy either way, whatever the group feels is appropriate.
So if we were, so if we were to look at, um, we were to look at January and I did talk with the clerk ahead. Um, certainly their preference, just because of the amount of work that the clerk's office does have in January as well. Um, would be, um, that there would be actually a, a count, a special or, yeah, a council meeting, a special council meeting. Um, on January the ninth. And then the two daytime meetings would be on the twenty third and twenty fifth, that will schedule the appropriate hours. And then the two nighttime meetings would be on January the thirtieth and February the first.
Oh, I just put a visual up on the, uh, the screen if it helps sort of put that together really quickly, but, um, if it's helpful, there it is, uh. That you can see it.
Cause, because I'm sure with, with S M T's support, we can figure out the amount of time that each, uh, department needs the first week. Um, and then if we don't need from eight thirty to four thirty, we can just schedule appropriate both days. Um, you know, the amount of different departments, get that done the first week, cause I think that's, you know, what. The council hopes for, and then the next week can be used for debate, final debates and discussion.
And then with the schedule, if we don't, we're still. Fighting, we're still debating on the first, we can always use the six. The cleanup last revisions or is there a firm deadline, we need to have things.
No, no, no firm deadline. Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, it's, it's, you know, council has to get through the process and feel comfortable. Um, obviously, you know, obviously we had, um. In my time here, we had moved up to early January, uh, but again, you know, the reason for the ask, uh, flip. Because, um, the sooner we get through the process, uh, Mr. Poupé and, and, uh, Ms. MacArthur like to get out the work. And the tenders and get on with projects and all of that to get the best, most efficient costs. Uh, before others get out to the marketplace at all, right, and that's, that's normal municipal process. Um, in terms of getting out instead of, you know, some, some councils don't get through their budget, um. You know, until March a- and then by the time you get tenders out, then you're potentially looking at increased costs as a result of later tenders and awards.
Any other comments from council?
Um, I'll just say that I, I do, uh, endorse, um, that image that Jeff had put up, I think that that would be one sufficient.
Go ahead, councillor Grant.
Uh, thank you, I would also endorse simply because I, like councillor Schwen, would probably operate better through daytime hours as opposed to late time night. Discussions about budget.
Everyone else is. Go ahead.
Sorry, Chair Burgess, uh, just through you to council too, I think the other piece would be the, the package delivery for the budget. Uh, typically, uh, council would get the, the package delivered prior to Christmas. Um, but given the circumstance, it would be, uh, recommended that the package would come out that first week of January. That would still give a good two and a half or so weeks though, ahead of, uh, uh, the presentations from, uh, from the departments.
Yeah, thanks for that, Jared, that was the other piece I forgot to mention is that just with the circumstances right now. Um, we're gonna get everything completed prior to Christmas in terms of. You know, um, finishing off all the numbers and, and getting everything ready. But then for clerks and finance to just have that early part of January to get out by either the third or the fourth, uh, your packages to you.
That's my Christmas time reading.
Your last years.
I still have it.
Who, who knows, you might like this so much.
Go ahead, Clerk Smith.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, uh, just, just, uh, cause council's only seeing this tonight. What, what our thought was is that we would put it on the agenda for, uh, the twelfth, but just, uh, it sounds like there's some support here, we're not doing anything. Out of line and we can set out those timelines and, and stuff in a, in a quick little memo for you. Um, so you can see what we're, what we're thinking and, and you're not just seeing it on the screen tonight, you can digest it. But that's, that's sort of our intent, if that's okay with you, um, I do need to, um. Double check a couple little things with the planning department, they're already looking at scheduling some public meetings. Um, so I'll have that information for you and then we'll have the timelines that we can have the budget packages. Um, and typically we give them to council a week ahead of the public or so, a, a week or so ahead of the public. Just so you have a chance to read them before you might get questions from the media or, or the public.
Thanks for that, alright. Moving on to the next part here, uh, council reports and updates, do any council members have any updates on that? Nothing to share. Alright, outstanding activity list, any discussion on that? Alright, see none. Uh, no notice of motions, so now I'm gonna pass this on to Mayor Shans, as I think we need to go back into closed.
Thank you, and we, we don't adjourn the open. Yes, we do. Yet, yes, no, we don't, thank you, yeah. Oh. Yeah. So Dana, we're going into closed, thank you for joining us. Thank you, I missed. Okay, uh, good evening and thank you for joining us, council about to meet in closed session and we need to pass the following resolution that the council of. Uh, we didn't finish the first closed, if anyone is paying attention. Um, so we need to, uh, make another motion that the council of the township will, it convenes in closed session on Tuesday, December fifth. Twenty twenty three at nine oh three P M. In accordance with section two thirty nine of the municipal act for the purposes of considering the following. A proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or lo- local board. And a position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on. Or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board, a property matter. Mover and secondary councillor Burgess, councillor Bryant, tell those in favor, that's carried, thank you. Meet to Tanya, can you stop the light?